Hang on, let me turn on the recorder.
I'm sorry, I didn't even notice you out there, I was doing something else.
Okay, go for it.
All right, I'm showing 5:32 on April 8, 2013. Kayla, are you ready to call?
I'm ready. Mayor Kooten?
Here.
Ms. Darryl?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Mock and Mr. Westbrook are absent.
Okay, we have a quorum, so as long as we're voting on something unanimous tonight, it'll fly. If it's not unanimous, we'll have to wait till we have a full commission here, or at least one more person. All right, now, next on the agenda is approval amendments. I think we can move forward with that.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, do we have any changes, or do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move if we approve this.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor? I close. All right, number one on the agenda tonight is proposed replacement signage at Summit Dental. Come on down and see, are you David?
Yes.
Okay, we have some comments on this, so we're gonna put Kayla to the test. She's had some vacation, and we're gonna see if she's well-rested and can read all these comments.
We're good, Kayla.
Right? The applicant was approved in February to modify the existing wall signs on their building located at 8600 Alexandria Way. Since the planning commission approval, work has commenced on the signage, only to discover a concrete design behind the existing sign. Because the approved plan utilizes individual channel letters, the concrete design is visible. Therefore, the applicant is requesting to attach the individual channel letters to a backer board to cover the concrete design. The overall size of the sign will not increase from what was previously approved. In my opinion, the revised proposal relates more to the architecture rather than a zoning review. Therefore, the city architects should provide an opinion about this request. However, I do not readily see why this request can't be approved, provided the backer board matches the color of the building. Do you have any questions or need any additional information? Please feel free to contact me.
Are there any other firm, further comments on this one?
No, the only comment I have is pretty much the same as Brian's, that the backer board ought to try to match the color of the brick.
Can we make that?
Yes, I have one other discussion. When you look at the ends of the backer boards, the way you have it laid out, some places is squared off, other places is rounded. I think we ought to get some uniformity.
Yeah, I didn't want to do just, oh, you might be talking like this little...
Well, this is squared off here by the D, this is squared off by the M, but I go over here and it's following the contour of the round portion of the D.
I didn't want to do this square sign, and it would take up less material to go around and contour it. I'm trying to achieve that individual letter look still without just wrapping up a board. So you're suggesting this, this square? Yeah, we can do that.
Well, it's more of an aesthetic thing. I just, my initial reaction is, how do I look like that? Does anybody have any other?
I don't have any.
Agree or disagree?
I like it the way you started.
All right, that's one for the way he has it.
Oh, I'm on the lot of golf.
All right.
I'll make a motion if we accept with the color of the backer board to match the brick.
Second?
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close? Okay, that was quick. All right, we'll see. Next is proposed signage at Guardian Building Products. Do we have anyone here representing Guardian?
There is nobody here, Mayor. You want to do it last?
Yeah. Proposed pole sign with dynamic display of funds. How you doing?
Mr. Swetolski's out of town, business, um, he has assistance over there with him. He's really stuck, he has to be sure that he's doing.
I'm doing well, how's Rob? Okay, going great. All right, comments on this, Kayla?
Brian does not have any comments. The email that you sent, or you received from Bob said that Brian's issues could be handled through the software.
Right.
So basically, it's whether or not you guys are happy with the aesthetics and the brick face.
Any questions? All right, we received an email with pictures of the sign and people there, and everything that we had asked for being handled. So do you have any problems with them?
No, I didn't have any problems at all. I was there on the property, so I just...
Yeah. I feel that it's very important for you. So, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve every submitted... The condition, I guess, has to be that the digital sign cannot go up until council consents their moratorium on electronics next.
Okay, when you anticipate that.
We don't. I mean, we can't say, this is a council member right here.
She was going to answer.
Well, he's out of town, right, Mr. Martin? That's why I should go out and talk to him, but he's...
Well, here's the deal.
He's out of town, I don't even need to...
The plan is, let's give it approval here. Then you go before council and say, we have this approved. So how about if we stretch that part out, we just approve the sign?
Well, I approve the sign, but I'm just saying, he can't install this.
Well, he knows that. He knows that. But if we have sign approval, and we go to council with sign approval, that's what we're going to assign them with, well, we okay to sign except for this. Understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I'm not sure we are empowered to do that.
We are empowered to approve what fits our codes. Does this fit our codes? Has he done everything that's necessary to meet our demand?
He has, except right now, we do not allow electronic signs.
Has he done what is necessary to meet the codes? And as the planning commission, council matic action, it's different than planning commission action. So the planning commission can approve this, that he has done everything to conform with our restrictions. The way the sign is going to be made, so that the letters are the right size, the size of, or the speed of message changes is right, everything is going to be in compliance.
That's pretty much spelled out in our code.
We have a code that wasn't followed by council. Do we follow the codes?
Yes, we follow.
Okay. So I think we can go ahead and approve this, and if you realize that there is a problem here, but I think it matters for you to go before council with an approval from the planning commission, that every single item that we brought forward, everything has been addressed. So it's up to you. If you're not gonna vote for it, then we can't vote.
Oh, I'm not gonna vote. It's just a question. For Brian, you're thinking more than anything else.
Yeah, well, it's on my shoulders. It's on my shoulders, not yours.
We can, we have approval this.
Go to a second.
I don't have a problem with the sign, I don't have a problem with it being over there on Highland Road, and I think the problem is, is a lot of council were not in favor of it being on 82, you know, kind of watching the signs going in certain areas, but over by Highland where the businesses are.
You can't?
I know.
You can't construct laws that way?
I know.
The law states that this is your constitutional right. If you take us to court and beat us, we lose all control over all signs. So if you want, you can put a girly sign up. I mean, you won't want, but that's how important this is. This is constitutionally your right. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Can we put a condition with council's approval for the...
All right, I just went through that with it.
Right.
If you make it conditional, then that's not going to council with something that's, we are saying is following the rules that we have spelled out very, very clearly. So alls we're doing is approving that it's in compliance with the planning commission's realm of authority.
Okay.
Okay?
And then he will be coming to council?
Well, then after, the council will have to deal with it, that's all. Whenever Ken comes back, or whenever anybody stands up and says, we need to deal with this, because funding stuff needs to move forward with this, catch up for all they lost the last two years.
And I understand the brick is probably gonna be done, and you need to get this order and get this going.
Yeah, we need ninety days, of course.
And I do understand that, and I will, I will talk to council and talk to Ken when he gets back, and we'll bring this up, and maybe he's gonna have to introduce legislation, right?
No, because we deal with the motion.
We deal with the motion, make another motion. He doesn't even have to be there, anybody.
Yeah, anybody can do it. You can make a motion.
So I can do it Thursday and make a motion?
Make a motion to allow this.
Might upset him a bit.
Well...
I don't want to upset the president of council right now.
So your next council meeting is Thursday?
Thursday is our council meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and I will talk to the law to hear something from you, to maybe introduce something.
Okay. That would be great, because you're our representative. Absolute pleasure.
Well, that's what I heard.
Okay, that would be great. I mean, that's the best I can do, and I don't know how...
He'll be back in town by Thursday.
Good, good, because the business owner, you know, this is a pretty big deal.
Right.
I was against this legislation with this motion right from the beginning, and it went through anyway, and what am I gonna say, except, well, if that's what you want, but it's illegal?
Yeah, I read your letter, so...
We have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Both. I hope you stay busy as hell.
I do too, thank you. And who's coming in Thursday?
Well, I think I need to get out.
Seven thirty is normal start for a meeting. There's a work session before the meeting that starts at six thirty. But not sure on that six thirty, because as far as I know, there's only a few pieces of legislation, so sometimes instead of starting at six thirty, they start at seven. Do you have my number?
We won't know the time until tomorrow, until Josephine gets our agenda out.
Why don't you call me, and I'll tell you when the time to be there, call my office.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll make sure that you're there at the right time.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mayor.
Really, you might want to get some, make some copies of that.
Well, I am, and I'm gonna have Kayla, because I'll be the sponsor on council for the motion.
Yeah, but they're gonna ask what you're talking about, you know, and that may be the specific.
Hi, Kayla.
What do you need?
I'm gonna need copies of this for council, for Thursday's meeting. All right? Do you want this one, or do you want...
I got it.
Okay.
I'll actually give them a copy, and we'll let you guys sign off on it.
All right.
We voted, you're all set. Good luck to you, nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
All right.
Hi.
All right, next is proposed pole sign with dynamic, that we did that one, we skipped one, that's right. Signage at Molin Labbe CrossFit. I'm sorry if I butchered my name.
Molin Labbe, it means okay.
Hi, how are you?
Good. My assistant.
Hi, assistant, how are you? Probably free.
She wants to sit up here myself.
She's on TV. You might be able to watch herself on TV. So smile real pretty. You know, you can go to our website, and the dining commission meetings are taped, and they're on our website, so she can see herself. How pretty you look, you look pretty. Okay, comments on this, Kayla?
There's two changes of the dimensions of the building, so what I'm saying is, it doesn't match the measurements that are on the memo, but the applicant is requesting three wall signs, one will be placed on the north side of the building, one will be placed on the south side of the building, and one will be placed on the west side, all thirty-two square feet. The total area proposed for the three set wall signs is ninety-six square feet. The building is located at 9100 Baileyview Road, and its zone is limited industrial. I've reviewed the sign for compliance with section eleven seventy-nine oh three F two, it matches the zoning code, which makes it square feet of identification signage for each line of the building frontage. The applicant's building unit frontage is thirty-nine feet along East Highland, which provides them with seventy-eight square feet of identification signage. Additional area permissible, given the property, is a corner lot, but is not necessary, because the ninety-six square feet being requested, as well as in the total allowable area for the primary frontage. Section eleven seventy-nine oh three C provides signage on each building frontage entitled to sign area, and in this case, all three sign locations qualify for signage based on the requirements of the code. Given this, and the fact the proposal is well below what is permitted, the signs can be approved as submitted.
All right, anything else on this? Any other questions, comments, permission? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second?
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Close? Bye. You did a good job, don't forget to watch the TV, all right?
Thank you so much.
Okay, all right. All right, next on the agenda is on the next page. Proposed warehouse addition.
Oh, that's all.
Okay, and multi-class, how you doing?
I do, good evening. Randy, you would take those, the dining wires?
Yeah.
Architect for representing the design of the class, this is a grand development.
There's quite a few notes on this, so there was a...
Position, right.
Okay, very good.
First name, Randy.
Randy. Don't forget that...
Oh, thanks.
We have to go sign before we leave on that.
Is it all right for council, Kayla?
Um, please do.
Yeah.
Here. Oh, thank you, Mayor. Do you want me to start reading now, Mayor, or are you...
Yeah, why don't you do that while we're signing?
Do you want me to just keep the pen?
I need it, sorry. I didn't bring an extra. All right, I'll start with Brian's memo. The applicant is proposing to construct an eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety-four square foot building addition to their main forty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-four square foot building located at eighty-two seventy-two Bavaria Drive. In addition, the proposal includes creating a substantial amount of new parking and pavement on the north end of the site. This additional pavement will eliminate several existing trees and will require utility pole relocation. A new secondary point of ingress egress is also proposed to connect the adjacent property at eight two two zero Bavaria to the subject site. The property is zone G I, and the industrial use is permitted by right in this district. As proposed, the building addition will be constructed on the north end of the main building and will remove a small portion of the existing parking lot. The design of the addition is similar to an existing building, and the architecture will include a masonry accent banding to mirror the existing. My analysis is based upon the site plan date stamp, March twenty-eighth, twenty thirteen. I offer the planning commission the following comments for consideration. Parking. The additional eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety-four square feet of building area results in a parking requirement of twenty-four spaces. Combined, the sixty-six thousand eight hundred sixty-eight square foot building with two uses, office and warehouse, requires ninety-two parking spaces by code. The site provides one hundred twenty-nine spaces and therefore complies with the code. My concern relates to the existing site conditions which provides minimal parking, which does not comply with the code, but now the applicant is proposing considerably more parking. Given that the vast majority of these existing and proposed building appears to be primarily warehouse spaces, I don't readily see why one hundred twenty-nine parking spaces is necessary. My recommendation is to limit the amount of impervious pavement on this site to the amount necessary to provide the required ninety-two parking spaces. By taking this approach, the additional green space will be provided on site. This approach will also reduce the overall, the owner's overall stormwater fees fee to the northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. Setbacks. The building addition is setback approximately fifty-five feet from Bavaria Road, which complies with the code. Landscape and lighting, the proposed pavement will eliminate nearly all the existing green space on the site and will remove the few existing trees. A landscape strip is being proposed along the Bavaria Road frontage, but no plans are provided as to what is being placed in this area. A small topsoil mound is also being provided. I recommend a detailed landscape plan to be provided for the final plan approval that illustrates how these landscape areas are being treated. At a minimum, quality street series should be provided along Bavaria Road. Finally, per section eleven seventy-one, eleven E two and four, off-street parking can be located in the front and side yards provided it is properly screened landscaping and approved by the planning commission. Future plans must provide details about how the off-street parking areas are being screened from Bavaria Road. The site plan does not provide details how the new parking areas will be illuminated. Final plan submittal should provide details about the proposed lighting and the foot candle strength at the property lines associated with the lighting. The proposal complies with the standards outlined in the planning and zoning for preliminary plan approval. At this time, I recommend only preliminary plan approval be provided, and a final site plan be approved by the planning commission after the comments in this memorandum are addressed.
Dennis?
Plans of the new addition indicate all the new materials will match the existing materials. Matching materials is an usual request to the commission, and that has been met, so I have no further comments.
Yes. Nick, next comment. I have reviewed the submittal plan on the April eighth planning commission agenda and offer the following. One, please provide pre-developed and post-developed impervious areas. Number two, stormwater detention must be provided for the improvements, either through onsite detention modifications to the existing detention basin, or by documentation that the existing basin has accounted for proposed development. Stormwater management facility design shall be in accordance with Macedonia Codified Ordinance and Summit County Engineers Stormwater Management Manual. Number three, stormwater quality must be provided for the proposed improvements. Number four, provide drainage calculations for proposed site improvements. Number five, construction as built, long-term maintenance agreement and operation and maintenance manual will be required. Number six, a proposed grading and utility plan will be required for paving and drainage purposes. Number seven, per eleven seventy-one, eleven E four, all parking areas and driveways shall be hard-surfaced by tunis concrete or concrete pavement. Provide a pavement typical section, as well as design and calculations for retaining walls. Preliminary plan approval is recommended with the understanding that all engineering concerns and issues will be addressed administratively prior to issuance of any permits. Approved engineering plans we provided to the commission prior to commencement of construction.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? I'm glad to see that you're standing, that's always a good thing.
Yeah, their design owner's been busy.
Good.
They bought the other building, and the reason that they're moving into this new building is they're taking their warehousing that they had now in the existing building, moving it into this building, and expanding the warehousing if it's not larger than what they're doing. The, there are a couple of items that I'd like to address.
All right.
Based on some of the memorandum. The reason for the parking, the larger parking area, is on their existing building, one, they call this building two, okay, on their existing building, they are hoping business keeps going, and next year at this time, we'll be back here again, sitting in front of you, and asking for an expansion of that building for the manufacturing, which at that point, the parking, some of this parking, we would cross, do a cross easement for parking for that space, because they would obviously need some more parking, and they're gonna lose some parking if we put an addition on it. So that's the reason why they felt, let's build it now, so that when we have it, then we can cross easement the parking to both properties. Same company owns both properties, but their Jay, the owner, one of the owners wants to keep it, so if he ever, God forbid, ever has to sell the building, he can still stand alone. So that's the reason for the additional size of the parking. I'd like to go, not necessarily here, but after the meeting, I've gone through the calculations, and the ninety-two spaces, I guess, my question is, does that take in the twenty percent reduction that you're allowed for storage? Because I've come down to the area needing this portion, only needing seventy-one spaces.
Well...
Per your code. Not that that matters, we'd like to go for the full size of the parking lot.
We have the opportunity tonight to give you preliminary plan.
That's what we're here, that's what we're here for.
You can always work some of these things out. Do you know who the N E O R S D is?
Um...
Or the sort of regional sewer district?
Yes, I do.
Well, the city's concerned for the amount of impervious surface you have.
Correct.
And if we can minimize that, while you're at this stage of the game, we're gonna tell you, why don't you keep it to a minimum? Because for every square foot you add, it costs you more.
Well, maybe we can, I would have, I'll check with the owner in that aspect, that could be something that, maybe we'd like to propose this, and maybe land bank portion of this, so that way, when they do do the addition at that point, we could present, bringing, you know, adding the additional parking spaces up here.
Well...
On that, we've spoke with Nick Feeney and all his items, and Scott Bickley, our engineer from Crockett Hesser, they've discussed it in regards to what we have to do for the storm, for take care of all that. We're working with that, so we know, we have to do the calculations, we have to see if what's there is able to handle, because previously, this building did have, when it was originally built, shown on the drawing, a future addition, that was about twenty thousand square feet. So we're not sure if the addition portion might already have been included in the calculations of the system that's there, that's what we need to verify, and then the only area then that we would need to be adding any control address would be the parking.
I'll tell you what, Randy, this city needs you very much, and they need your city income tax, because that's what we live on, that's how we exist. We want to encourage economic development, all right? So we are very much in favor of this, because...
I am.
Because it's an improvement, you are growing, that's all magic to me, you know, that's like words I want in here every day. So with that thought in mind, if we give you preliminary climate approval tonight, can he still work out those details?
Yes.
All right, so...
Okay, that's...
I'll at least get you going.
No, that's great, that's what we want to do. Yeah, that's what we want to do, because we want to get the architectural drawings and the design drawings for, obviously, the site, but also the other drawings out, so we get them into the city for approvals, so they can get building, we're hoping sometime in, end of June, beginning of July, so...
Right.
To get this going, because they want to have it closed in.
And that's important, we know that. We don't want you to come to a meeting, have to come back to another meeting, without even getting going. So let's get you going tonight. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we give preliminary approval first.
My second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Randy, good luck to you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Sean, Karen's here from the design over at Also, so...
Hi, Sean.
Thank you for your time.
You betcha. Good luck to you, I hope you keep right on growing, you gotta buy four more lots.
Art Flyner may not have been aware this was an actual warehouse, he may have calculated...
Yeah, that's what I thought, which is fine, we can go through that, that's not a problem.
Yeah, honestly, that kind of assumed was gonna be an office area or something.
Yeah, no, it's all warehouse, plenty of, they need the space. All right, great, thank you.
Very good, good luck.
Okay, good luck. See ya. All right, next is proposed street story assisted living facility on South Bedford Laurie, how you doing?
Good, man, how are you?
Well.
Been a while. It's very good to see you. Mr. Mayor, members of the planning commission, staff, it's my partner, Bill Brooks, and our H B holders. As you know, we're seeking preliminary concept approval for a ninety-eight year old assisted living facility to be located at South Bedford Road and South Park Drive. It might be appropriate to give members of the commission just a little bit of background on... It might be appropriate to give members of the commission just a little bit of background on who I am and what I do. I've been in the senior housing industry since nineteen ninety-seven. Planned and built my first facility in metro Ohio in nineteen eighty-eight. Built my second building in Mayfield Village in two thousand and one and doing this ever since. I've co-developed or developed over a dozen facilities in Ohio, Kentucky and Florida in the interim. I'm a registered nurse by background. Been the director of nursing in a couple of hospitals and an administrator in a couple of others. Just thought I'd mention, I come at this business from the viewpoint of being a registered nurse. In fact, I pass medicines in my, in my facilities that I own because somebody didn't show up on the night shift, so I'm very close to patient care.
Yes, you are. What is S N F to you?
I'm sorry, S N F is skilled nursing facility. I'm currently working for Lake Health, Lake Hospital, former Lake Hospital system on a skilled nursing facility and an assisted living facility adjacent to their new hospital in Concord as well. Working on a project in Florida and I have another one. Just finished a subsidiary, just finished one in Oakwood and stay pretty busy doing what we do. I've served on, for a decade on the board of directors of the Ohio Assisted Living Association. For six years, the Lake County Council on Aging and for a number of years in Greater Cleveland Area Alzheimer's Association as well. So I'm a guy kind of steeped in the background of assisted living and care. Our project summary is ninety-eight unit, three-story assisted living facility is identified in our architect's rendering. New materials. Plan, the facility would include the state-of-the-art assisted living residence. Seventy units designated for a standard program of assisted living. Assisted living is by and large assistance with bathing, dressing, ambulation, medication administration. It also includes three meals a day, recreation, transportation and physical rehabilitation services on site. The average age of move-in is at six. When people move into assisted living, oftentimes they're very frail and they may need help actually to get back, of course, to the bathroom, that kind of thing. Always like to profile a little bit. It gets pretty much entirely private pay.
Right.
We're in a private pay alternative basically to a nursing home in many respects.
What happens if somebody gets, like is in a hospital and has to go somewhere for rehab? Is that what, they would go to your facility?
They could. The typical transition, we used to keep people with a total hip procedure back in the eighties for fourteen to twenty days.
Uh huh.
Immediately in nineteen eighty-five, nineteen eighty-six, when hospitals were paid a flat rate for that total hip procedure.
Right.
The average length of stay went down to four days. And what happens is usually immediately upon discharge, they go to a skilled nursing facility that specializes in physical rehabilitation. We also specialize in physical rehabilitation. We like to say that when you're eighty-seven years old, you're either diminishing or improving your functional capacity every day. We're huge believers in physical rehabilitation, both because it's the right thing to do and because frankly, it extends our length of stay because people live longer and, and it improves their, their functional capacities, so.
And quality life?
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's the important.
Well, after open-heart surgery, they booted me out the door within days.
Yeah.
And I went to a facility such as yours and I wish it was yours.
Lake Health asked us to, to, I used, obviously I used to work there, I was the administrator there, but when I was there, I started a hospital-based skilled nursing facility that provided rehab services. My mom used it after her back surgery and they shut it down because it wasn't making money. And they called me up and said, we made a mistake shutting that down and we really know that the healthcare system of the future is gonna bundle that payment from the acute care, the, you know, now, it has to also pay for the nursing home and the home health and the assisted living. So Lake is really leading the way kind of among hospital systems and they're saying, okay, then we want the skilled nursing on our campus, we want the assisted living on our campus, we already have the home health. I started it for them when I was there and, and so we wanna, we wanna tie all this together. Macedonia is a unique area, obviously we've done a market study and obviously we feel there's a significant need here and we're really excited about the opportunity to get involved.
Not as excited as I am.
Well, thank you. We're also excited about these guys coming in next to us.
Yeah. As far as the location, I'm glad you took that location, that's gonna give you visibility from the freeway. It's really, really a great spot. We, years ago, I think it was twelve years ago or thirteen years ago, the future growth committee talked about facilities such as yours being necessary for Macedonia to achieve what it wants to be as far as being a destination. So I'm very happy that you decided to come here Laurie and Bill.
We're excited.
You know where I'm coming from, I don't know how anybody else feels, but to me, this is absolutely wonderful.
We noted in our market study too, there are some very nice facilities in the area.
Yes.
However, there are also some very old facilities in the area. When we were building in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, we averaged six hundred and fifty gross square feet per client inclusive of the kitchen, the circulating space, everything. Now we're averaging a thousand to eleven hundred. I noticed a woman on staff asked what the room sizes were, our studios, which are gonna be less than twenty percent of our entire place, are four hundred square feet. Our, our one bedroom is six hundred square feet and our two bedroom is eight hundred square feet, so they're much more substantial. We didn't use to put in separate theaters and separate chapels and we didn't even have rehab space. But now we do all that stuff, so we're excited about today's buildings because we think they're so much better designed for the fifteen or twenty years going forward.
And you should know, yeah. I, you know, I always used to wonder why they never use mechanics to design cars. So having somebody from the business of healthcare designing a building and building it is phenomenal.
We actually designed this building along with the way we staff it. Staffing standards on each, for the type of care that we provide and we provide a rich staffing standard when we design the building to it. So when the building is ninety-eight percent or ninety-nine percent occupied, it just, it just works, you know, it goes. We're excited about it. We're very excited about it. We will have twenty-eight units for memory care specifically. Unfortunately, they, they say that fifty percent, the latest statistic I read was forty-eight point some percent of people over age eighty-six have some type of, of memory care issue. Whether it's because of Parkinson's, drug use, alcohol use, Alzheimer's, or any of a number of different things. Dementia is just a real thing and it can happen and we want to have a specialty unit for that too, so we'll have twenty-eight units specifically dedicated to that. We're estimating in our financial pro forma about ninety employees, full and part-time, about seventy-five full-time equivalents. Our operating expenses are about three and a half million a year and of that, about forty-five percent will be salaries, so we'll be creating some jobs. I, at this point, should probably just, you know, let you know.
Do we have comments on this one?
Oh, we do.
Yes, we do.
I'll start with Brian. The applicant is proposing a ninety-eight unit assisted living facility on vacant land between South Bedford and Girl Scout Way. The subject site is Zone V one Convenience Business District and assisted living facilities are conditionally permitted subject to the performance requirement set forth in section eleven sixty-seven oh eight and the standards for conditional use set forth in section eleven thirty-seven oh four of the code. I have reviewed a letter including a site plan and architectural rendering dated March twenty-eighth, twenty thirteen in connection with this request and offer the planning commission with the following comments for their consideration. Section eleven sixty-seven oh eight analysis. This section sets forth performance standards specific to the various types of senior housing that can be developed in the city. The site plan provided is very conceptual, but it appears that the proposed setbacks are appropriate. However, items that are unknown and must, items that are unknown must be provided are the building height and the individual dwelling unit sizes. It is important to note that this section of the code does require an applicant to submit sufficient evidence or documentation to satisfy the mayor that occupancy will be restricted to seniors. The mayor is required to submit the evidence to council who shall by a majority vote confirm the mayor's determination that the development will be perpetually occupied by seniors. Section eleven thirty-seven oh four analysis. This section requires the site plan be submitted for review and approval by the planning commission. I have reviewed the required criteria against the applicant's conceptual site plan and have determined that the plan does not provide the necessary information as required by the code. However, for conceptual purposes, the plan is sufficient. Once the applicant submits for the required conditional use permit, the site plan must adhere to requirements outlined in this section of the code. After a revised site plan is submitted, the planning commission can evaluate the plan against criteria listed in section eleven thirty-seven oh four B to ensure that the development does not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood and fulfills the objectives of the zoning ordinance. Miscellaneous items. This site is located adjacent to the land being proposed for two family rental homes as requested by Redwood Acquisition LLC. I mention this because I believe it is important to coordinate the traffic roadway improvements for the two developments. The city should consider roadway connectivity between the two developments with a single ingress egress from South Bedford Road in addition to access from Girl Scout Way. While it's purely speculative at this point, a traffic signal on South Bedford Road may be necessary to accommodate the newly created traffic pattern from these two developments. This concern should be explored by the applicant and the city engineer. Coordination between the two developments is important given the fact that Indian Creek does place limitations on where an access to South Bedford Road can be located. Recommendation, the code does not provide a conceptual approval for the, for the proposal, but I do believe conceptually the use is appropriate for this area of Macedonia. A conditional zoning certificate is needed and site plan approval for this proposal. At this time, the request should be tabled until the applicant submits for conditional approval and provides the necessary documentation for the code. As noted in this memorandum, strong consideration should be given to coordinating the traffic flow and roadway network for the two developments proposed adjacent to one another.
That's it?
That's the end of Nick, or that's the end of Brian's.
All right.
All right, next comment. I have reviewed the submitted, submitted plan on the April eighth planning commission agenda and offer the following. Number one, please show the repairing setbacks and flood plain limits on the plan. The easternmost portion of the parking lot may fall into the repairing setback. Northwest corner may also encroach a repairing setback. See section nine twenty-four of the Macedonia Codified Ordinance for regulations regarding development within repairing setbacks. Variances may be required. Number two, stormwater management facility design shall be in accordance with Macedonia Codified Ordinance and Summit County Engineers Stormwater Management Manual. Based upon conceptual layout, it appears that underground detention system will be required. Number three, stormwater quality must be provided for proposed improvements. Number four, post-construction as-built L T M A and operation and maintenance manual will be required for stormwater management facilities. Number five, proposed grading utility and lighting plans will be required. Number six, a traffic study may be requested to satisfy concern about development in this area and how it may impact South Bedford Road.
Seems quite musical. Larry? We, by the way, we're gonna be fixing this year. Good, repair, put the sidewalk on the west side, which will be in the side view. All the way down.
Wonderful.
Let's go, yeah. It's a long time coming.
Well, there's a lot of traffic going through there when you're coming out, like in the mornings, like in school hours.
On South Bedford.
Oh yeah, like when the school gets out, the high school gets out and then, so going to school and then coming out of school, I think they get out at two eleven and then going to school, they start like at six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning. So it's kind of tied up for an hour, you know, both ways, I think probably, you know, that's.
Well, Rita would know.
Yeah, I know, trust me, I get fucking.
She takes them there, but. Well, that really is not the business hours that you would be, you would be more or less like visiting hours, which wouldn't be the same as school hours.
Right. Typical staff shifts begin at seven AM and.
Till three?
And at, yeah, seven to three, three to eleven, eleven to seven.
I know, I was the.
Yeah, oh yeah. We, where visitors are concerned, it's sad, but true, there isn't a lot of traffic flow with ninety-eight residents in there and you might get fifteen or twenty visitors trickling in over the period of an entire. We, we tend not to be big traffic producers, it's principally staff. And on the day shift, there'd be ten to twelve individuals coming in to work and, and obviously we have trash pickup from time to time and food delivery from time to time and we accommodate that.
Well, we're concerned, I mean, and there's been any reason to be concerned.
Absolutely.
Don had some comments, Don, would you like to tell us those?
Well, once the building plans are submitted, they'll have to be reviewed against the two thousand open fire code.
Right.
But your conceptual plans only shows one elevator and sometimes that is an issue based on size. You know, we need a forty-five hundred pound elevator to get the cot in to do CPR. Smaller elevators do not accommodate the cot. And there's no center stairs there, so if we need additional personnel on the second or third floor, they're gonna have to go all the way to the stairwell and then come up to wherever the patient is. You know, the pre-hospital care is extremely important and some of those items delay the care to the patient. Typically, what we do now in other facilities, they take control of the elevator. So when they get to the second or third floor, the elevator's theirs, they do not have to wait for the elevator to come back when they need to exit the facility with the patient.
Yeah, the last time our architect did this building, they only put in one elevator, we typically do two.
Yeah, and they're, and you only show one, one covered entrance, so, you know, I guess we'll be parked under the canopy there, you don't show an ambulance entrance or a service entrance.
No. I'll talk to the architect about that, I have a meeting with him on Thursday. The, the last time he did this building and that's what we're meeting about on Thursday is to modify the floor plan for the memory care unit. We need a separate entrance for the memory care anyway, so we can integrate that planning into that separate entrance.
I mean, some of that would just hinder inpatient care.
Yeah.
Doesn't it show it right here in the first line?
We intend to put it on the first floor.
So what we're expecting.
Yes. Yeah.
We really wanted this to be conceptual first and then we're gonna go back and to whatever city codes and specifications we'll get it right.
Felt the need to kind of share the importance of.
Yeah, no.
I appreciate the pre-hospital care. Our, our med control doctor is pretty hard on us.
Yeah.
He's tough. You know what, it's gonna be gorgeous. What have you, I think from eighty-two, what have you?
I think we're maybe thinking memory care is in the first floors, that's where their twenty-eight units and a half is correspond with.
Exactly. What do we need to do here, Mike?
You just need conceptual approval now, what they're gonna do is go back to the drawing board with their engineer and architect, see what variances are needed for the reparions and then go to the V Z A, in the meantime, come back here for their final conditional approval.
All right, so do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion, we're giving conceptual approval.
Have a motion, I have no further discussion, I've settled all of right now. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Jamie, you.
When did you work out to Lake County Hospital?
I got there in eighty-eight.
My son was a physical therapist up there back in ninety-eight.
Oh yeah? I left in ninety-six to start working in the senior housing industry.
He's since left and has his own physical therapy.
All right, maybe I know his name.
Greg Morris.
Greg, I haven't met him. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Nice job.
Okay, see, you know, it's too bad for the public and audience, we don't have something that we can insert or show as a picture of the building.
He's getting all fancy on us now.
You know, right in the, the taping.
Well, sometimes, sometimes she uses this camera, so whatever you have up there.
Yeah, whatever you have.
Yeah, that's right, and I had a picture right here, but it was kind of small. Anyhow. Furthermore, nonetheless, Redwood. Next on the agenda, Redwood and this will be. Rental rent style homes in South Park Drive. Rental ranch-style homes in South Park Drive, which is also Girl Scout Way. And, John?
Yep.
Okay. Let's go.
Fantastic. I have a presentation to introduce you to who Redwood is. It goes over a little bit about the site and then, uh, I think you guys are customary, then we'll have staff comments and some, some back and forth. I do have copies of this presentation, if you guys want to keep, take notes on them. I'm cutting them off just in case the presentation gets short.
Good idea.
I like to be prepared when I can.
Yeah.
If you want those for...
Thank you.
Fantastic. Uh, Redwood is a twenty-two-year-old developer based here in Cleveland. We build exclusively a two-bedroom, approximately thirteen-hundred-square-foot unit with a two-car attached garage. Uh, we were founded in nineteen ninety-one. Uh, what we found in Ohio, you'll notice that these are all of our projects we have currently, uh, we have residents in. They're really heavily weighted towards northern Ohio. We're working on an expansion in Michigan, Columbus, and also Indianapolis. We found that the need for our, our product far outweighs the supply, um, for the people that we are looking to move into this. Portfolio-wide, and I think this is an indicator of that, we're ninety-nine percent occupied. The one percent roughly is turnovers. If somebody moves out, we have a month to turn the unit over to somebody else. The last number I saw was sixteen out of twenty-six communities have waited on this. So that allows us to be highly selective with who we allow in. As I mentioned, we build a thirteen-hundred-square-foot, uh, unit, it's actually twelve-hundred-and-ninety-three. I don't want to split square feet if we don't have to. Um, it's a two-bedroom, two-bath with a den.
It's how much, twelve?
Twelve-hundred-and-ninety-three. Single-story ranch-style home designed with the federal housing, fair housing guidelines in the inside. And as close to handicap ADA accessible on the outside as we, we can. Uh, we have to meet, I think it's standard of five percent. We try to meet it on all of them. Uh, we, we cater to a predominantly aging population, as was mentioned with the previous applicant. We're kind of the step into what they're doing, so we're going to be intermediate step.
What's the age limit?
Uh, we don't, we don't age restrict. Predominantly speaking, um, we have an average age of fifty-two, which, uh, as compared to national averages, is thirty-seven. So, uh, you know, being fifteen years older, I would kind of let the market take care of that, but fifteen years older, you can see that, uh, predominantly we have a lot of fifty-five plus. Where that gets dragged down, we also have a contingent of individuals, um, young professionals, twenty-six to thirty-four, doctors, nurses, attorneys, planners, engineers, you name it, architects, who can afford the rent.
What's the rent?
Uh, these units are going to rent for somewhere between twelve-hundred and fourteen-hundred dollars a month on average. Depends on where the premiums are. Uh, you know, if you back up to the lake, what, what you back up to, what your view is.
Okay.
So we, we, the market allows us to, to, to set rents like that. We set rents like that because we feel it allows us to be selective with who moves in. Here's some interior, some interior shots. Uh, we think that some of what, uh, makes our product, uh, successful is, again, no stairs, a single-story design allows you to move out of your two-thousand, twenty-five-hundred-square-foot colonial, into a thirteen-hundred-square-foot, uh, rental. This is essentially what you would see in most condominium or townhouse projects. The difference is it's just a different way of paying for it. You know, some people, prior to the downturn, everybody believed that homeownership was a fantastic opportunity. Uh, I think a lot of us have stepped back and said, well, maybe homeownership isn't what I need for the next ten years of my life. This provides that flexibility to have a different option, different way to pay for your house. No one above, no one below. These are, are, like you said, ranch-style units and they're, they're townhouse in structure. You know, firewalls from the foundation up to the roof, so they are individual units. We, we provide what I think you would see in most rentals as an upgraded finished level. We use maple cabin tree, not malamine, which you see, or I think it's malamine, uh, you see in a lot of rental situations. We use an upgraded, uh, you know, Formica countertop. We do use Formica because it's easy to replace if we need to maintain ability, obviously, is, is, is an issue there. We provide washer and dryer hookups in the unit. Uh, they're in the second bathroom, uh, next to all the rest of the plumbing.
So these aren't supplied with appliances or anything? You have to...
Uh, they're, they're provided, they're supplied with the refrigerator, the stove, I believe the microwave, but not the washer and dryer.
Okay.
Energy efficiency is something that we take very seriously. We test all of our units for air tightness and we hold our contractors to extremely high standards, uh, to ensure that we meet very high standards. Uh, what do our exteriors look like? Uh, this shows a six-unit building, we aren't building a six-unit, but that was the best color rendering I had. You'll see that, you, you do see the garage door on the front. We've added dormers to the front to add some interest. The garage doors are, uh, an upgraded garage door from what you see in most cases. We do have the windows, they're carriage-style doors, they have the faux, uh, hinges on them. Uh, we put carriage lights on the outside of every unit. We actually use carriage lights to, to light our streets. Uh, we find that it's a much softer light and they're controlled centrally, so you can't turn them on or off in your unit. They're all a central circuit. So, uh, you know, we control the photovoltaic cells, they go on and they go off. And they're maintained by our, our, our maintenance personnel, which I'll talk about in a minute. Uh, we do use three different, uh, materials in our building. We use a, a stone, uh, for the water table. I'm going to talk about the, the main building and then talking to Mr. Sachs will have some extra... So some changes to that for other buildings, but they're all going to probably impart the same design elements. Uh, we do use a stone, uh, for the water table at the bottom. You'll see above that there's a horizontal siding. And then at the peak, I'll see if I can bring my pointer up here, up in this area, we use a, a vinyl shake, uh, shingle to, to just provide some different view lines in the front of the building. The, uh, the, the rears of the unit, which you'll see in a minute, I want to show you the inside, do have private patios. And as I said, we do try to be fully compliant when we can. Here's a view on the side of the, the, uh, the building. You will notice at the sides, we do try to put windows in. I can't guarantee that everyone will look exactly like this. We may put different locations for windows depending on how close they are to the neighbors and, and views, things of that nature. We take a very custom approach. And again, this is a six-unit building, but it gives you an idea kind of how we finish the back of the building off and, and how that's, how that's done. Uh, who are our residents? I think you'll find our residents are different than, uh, you know, what you typically see in apartments and what I think apartments conjure up. Generally, empty nesters and young affluent, uh, young professionals. I'll go through this kind of quick because we did talk about it, but I, I showed a monthly run of a thousand to twelve-hundred. I can actually confirm that to you guys, but the last print I saw was twelve to fourteen hundred, so I can confirm that. Uh, it will, certainly won't be under a thousand, I know that. And typically, we see on average four to six years as our tenure in the unit. We do not, as a, as a rule, we don't sign multi-year leases. We see that, some people see it as a benefit, some people see it as a hindrance. We see it as both. It gives you financial flexibility, but it does not give you the flexibility to get rid of a tenant if they aren't who you want in your building. So we sign a one-year lease and we renew on one-year leases. Uh, so everybody's tied to that. Obviously, there's write-outs for medical conditions, things of that nature. We recognize who we're renting to, but we keep a one-year lease. And that's something that we do very strong because we, we want the ability to remove people if they are a problem. We're a service-oriented, uh, organization. We have a full-time, uh, maintenance person who will live on-site. We also have a full-time manager who will live on-site. The maintenance person, all the way down to you have a box in your car that's too heavy to carry in. You have a light bulb above your kitchen sink that's burned out. Call our maintenance guy, he comes down and takes care of it for you. You know, we, we recognize that climbing on ladders, carrying in boxes, things of that nature, aren't, aren't what our residents want to have to do. They move into here because it's kind of a concierge type of, 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 of service. And they can still have that with their own front door, their own two-car attached garage and their own patio out the back. Uh, that, that's really the, the key to why people move into, into our, our units. Uh, we say, we, we sell peace and quiet as our entity. We take that very seriously. Uh, we do do background checks on all residents. Uh, we don't accept felons, drunk driving, things of that nature.
About dogs?
Dogs, we do accept. Uh, we are pet-friendly. Uh, and I think you'll see in the plan, once I pull that up, that there are areas for, for animals, uh, to be able to walk them, to, to run them, to play cricket.
But they have to be quiet.
Generally speaking, yeah. I mean, dogs are dogs, you know, the...
I have to laugh. My, my dogs love Dennis. They know his face now.
Does Dennis love your dogs? I guess it's probably the...
I love all dogs.
Yeah. The, the dogs didn't know Dennis in the beginning, but now they know who he is, so they don't go after him as bad.
Big, real big dogs or?
No.
No.
Ankle waders.
Yeah.
Um, as, as kind of introduced, the site's on, near the Girl Scout Way. Uh, I've outlined on there, you'll see, it's kind of a little bit hard to see, but over here on the west side of the site is the pond, you can see from two-seventy-one, the sound wall and somewhere right around right here. Uh, with Girl Scout Way and then down this, we have, I forget the name of the stream, Indian Creek or something.
Yes, Creek. That's it.
Running down the, uh, the east side of the property. Uh, here's a, just a, a quick, uh, view of what the site plan is. These are arranged in four-unit buildings, that's what was previously approved on the site. We've stuck with that, that four-unit, uh, style. Haven't asked to deviate from that beyond what you see here. We maintained a general loop pattern, which is what was previously approved by the city under the, uh, the zoning plan or the concept decree back, uh, two thousand and six. Uh, and we, we tried to create some kind of open spaces in the middle for dogs or things of that nature. And the other kind of design element that we had to deal with was the fact that we're accessing two accesses off of a cul-de-sac. And safety on that cul-de-sac was something that was, uh, very, very much of a concern for us. We all know if you pull in the cul-de-sac and it's only two drives, people drive any which way, they, they have to get to the driveway. What we proposed in here is kind of in keeping with Summit County, Summit County Engineers' direction is, uh, I know you guys aren't Summit County engineer, but to look at how we can make this kind of a roundabout, to make it function a little bit more like a roundabout. Put, put an island in the center, have our drives come off as if they were constructed off of a roundabout. We felt that center island was very important to, to, and the splitter islands coming in and out of the developer, very important to helping to maintain safe access to this community for people entering and leaving.
I think it's a good idea. I think it works quite well for the design.
Yes, roundabouts are it today.
They're, they're becoming it. I don't know that I can meet all the, the dimensional requirements of a roundabout, but for the amount of traffic that's going through here, I think it's...
It's close. The idea is shared by department vehicle access.
We'll have to run, uh, your, your trucks. Once I get your standard, we'll run your trucks through, to make sure that...
Fire code.
Yeah, absolutely. And one of the, one of the options is, and you see it a lot of places because of larger trucks, we got to move moving trucks in and out of here too. So, I mean, we, we have to be able to move, be able to move a moving truck through there. We may end up having to go pave shoulder on the inside of the roundabout and then, uh, vegetative cover on the inside of that so that there's a modelable curb. You'll see that in a lot of roundabout situations where they've got larger trucks that have to get through there. So we'll work through that, uh, without, without too much concern. Uh, on our, on our site plan, if you drive in, uh, in this first building here, we have a management office and a leasing office right here. We've got adjacent parking, uh, for that, that'll be there long-term. It's a, it's a fully, uh, it's a, it's a full part of the structure. And then we've kind of envisioned a, a gazebo or a shelter or something down by the water over in this area to give people who are walking an opportunity to sit down and kind of enjoy some of the view. I understand part of that view is two-seventy-one, but people like water, they like looking at water, uh, so we felt that was important. And then, uh, excuse me, I stepped, moved over, but, uh, the, the same thing can be said in this one. Uh, we, we worked to kind of get a central green in between the units, uh, right here to allow those units to look back onto that. Uh, around the rest of the, the development, obviously, these units don't look out onto anybody. These units look out into some trees that we're trying to maintain and then the power lines, we want to maintain the trees so that our people don't look at the power lines, not going to lie. Uh, and then these units over here on the east side, um, you know, have the view of, of the creek, uh, and kind of the natural woodlands that are there. That left these units to look back-to-back. We wanted to make those units something special for those people, give them a little more room. You can see kind of the, the regional view on this.
You know, um, they're going to be addressing the two-seventy-one bridge. They're going to make it from four to six lengths. All right, now, what's good about that is you can approach them about a wall, a sound wall.
Yeah.
That's the time to do it and that would be perfect.
Well, actually, getting, getting this project approved is probably part and parcel of immediately get that done. Because when they expand, it's going to have to put the wall up. If there's residential adjacent to it, so...
There's some walls for these guys.
Not so good for these guys, good for me.
Yeah, well, line of sight is important to them, but on the other hand, um, that, that is an area, even where there's older homes, we do want a sound wall, so...
Absolutely.
And we were told one day they'd start the bridge process, which should be soon.
Okay.
It'll be part of it.
No, that's, that's very good to know. Uh, one of the things that, that we try to do too is, uh, try to maintain as much vegetation as we can. I mean, I want people to be able to see the lakes, but at the same time, I want the vegetation to chew up the sound. So, you know, it's, we're, we're kind of playing in both sides of it. If, if we can get a wall, then we can have it.
I was, uh, I took a ride today with a fellow that's been building homes in Macedonia for a piece of thirty years. His name's Paul Feig. And I want to thank him for taking the time out of his day to go ride with me down to Hudson. And here I made a car with a builder.
Yeah.
Okay. And he made mention of, uh, the quality of windows that you have, um, the quality of lot of building materials. So I just want that on record, even like the, the shake. That's a vinyl shake, right?
That's vinyl.
So there's nothing as far as maintenance, nice textured siding. A lot of those things he brought to my attention because what do I know?
Well, and...
But, I mean, that close, people can go see him in Hudson.
Absolutely, yeah. We have our project down in Hudson, uh, that's being built, we're also in Kailua Falls. You know, we're, 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 we're in Summit County, there's, there's a lot of us here. Uh, and one of the things you'll notice is exactly what you've said, we use an upgraded siding. Uh, we got to maintain these. We, we own, you know, twenty-six communities, we aren't building these to sell them, we're building them to own them for the next forty years because it's demographical growth.
The wall, the base wall around the, the bottom of the hubbub is that standard?
Uh, with stone, yeah.
In Hudson?
Yeah, no, that's...
Is there a stone all the way around?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's... Now, and, and some of the, the units that, that face in that we're looking at ourselves in the back, um, you know, we'll work with Dennis on, on what the stone looks like back there. We may not put the stone on all buildings, just to kind of get different views. But, uh, no, it is standard, the stone on the front and on the sides, that's all, that's all standard, what you're going to see here.
Well, we were actually inside one of your houses, so don't arrest me because...
I won't tell anybody. I, I will make sure the pride one who's sitting behind me knows that, but, okay. They're, they're the ones that are, are responsible for keeping this, the, the site secure, so they'll...
So a lot of this, what you're telling us, do you have more in the presentation?
No, uh, this was my last slide. You know, why it's good for Macedonia, uh, you know, realistically, this product only exists in either an ownership form, uh, like you have in, in Terramino over here, or in an assisted living form. Uh, this provides people the flexibility to still live in their own house, but like, for a paper differently. Private roads, we're going to pay, you know, full, full commercial property taxes, just as, as any operating business would, with, with, with very little impact in terms of, uh, roads, you know, trash pickup, things of that nature. So I think that the, uh, the tax, the tax implications of this for any community are, are very positive.
Yes, that's one of our best kind of communities.
You know, with very few children, you know, typically what we see with the children here, it's, uh, the other half of the divorce. You know, one half lives in the house, the other half has to find a place to live. So it's not a new child to, to, to the school district. It's a child that, you know, the other parent had to find a place in the district to live. And so they'll move into our community too.
Only two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms. We do that on purpose.
Yep.
Uh, no two bedrooms?
No, sorry. We find the two bedrooms, I mean, they hit square in the middle of our market. That's all we want to capture our market, so...
Well, you know, there's, there's people who have an adversity to rental homes coming into any community. And I did a little bit of research and in Macedonia, almost eight percent of our, all of our homes are rental homes. That's almost ten percent to me. That's a lot, a lot of homes already that are rental homes and are not maintained as good as these will be. So that's some point I wanted to get out so that, you know, if you have an adversary to rental, Paul Feig was on council back when they turned down some rental units there. So he has experience in...
His father, the gentleman you were with, it was his dad, all right?
I'm, I was with his dad. I was with his dad.
Yeah, that's.
Paul Fike.
Right.
So.
These are what I would thought, I would consider the typical rental house, you know, being built.
I appreciate that, because we do try very hard to distinguish ourselves and that, we believe that's part of what makes us who we are.
Well, the minute I pulled it to the house, I knew it was yours. We weren't sure who the builder was. Of course, naming it Redwood Lane helped a little bit too, but the house is exactly as depicted here. I mean, this, that.
That is a slightly different style unit that we build there. It's not nearly as efficient. This design here is kind of the height of our.
Well, when you look at the patio doors that go into the back, you look at the domed ceiling inside, you look at all these.
All those pieces are exactly the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's nice, that's nice.
We're just forced into a different envelope because of Hudson's requirements. It wasn't nearly as efficient for us.
Well, do you ever put sidewalks in? Ed has some concerns about sidewalks.
We do, but.
Can?
Yes, we can.
We actually prefer to, in this community, we control it. We like to provide alternate paths rather than sidewalks, like to provide paths through, I'll go back to, you know, where the open space is, you know, connecting paths maybe through here and maybe through this back open space here and out. If sidewalks are something you absolutely want, we typically find that with the use they get, one side of the street is usually sufficient.
And that might be sufficient. I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm gonna let us talk one second. We're concerned because we have planning unit developments, PUDs with cluster homes. And Ed's concerned because he sees.
If you go there in the summertime and you have women pushing babies or just kids riding bikes, cars darting around them trying to, you know.
Yeah.
You know, for the egress.
Yeah.
And everything else, it's not a safe situation.
And that's actually why we like to put our paths kind of in a different location.
Yeah, but if you're going down to Rosemary's house or Betty's house or the one side of the street.
I, yeah, as long as there's sidewalks available, I mean, I'm not, I'm not here trying to run their loss up or being system.
Yeah.
I mean, I think they can get sidewalks in, but does require a little shit being.
What's the setback?
It says here it's seventeen, right?
We've got twenty-five.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, 'cause that's what they're requesting that you have to, yeah.
That's, I think that's what the code is, that's.
Right.
I don't know, I looked back at the plan and I think what happened was the plan wasn't real well mentioned. So, he was scaling off.
Well, what do you need from us tonight?
Well, first you want to read the comments from.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we got.
Unapproved.
Yeah, Google, but.
Forget it, ask.
I'm sorry, yeah. That's a good answer. That was, that was a good answer, except that we need now to go through our wonderful Kalos, who's been doing such a great job tonight.
I think she's most of the way through her wire though.
That's right. All right, Brian's comments. The applicant is proposing to construct eighty attached single-family rental units at the end of Girl Scout Way. Proposed zoned R two resident, the property is zoned R two residential district. Please note, the property was rezoned by the Summit County Court of Common Pleas as part of an agreed upon judgment entry case number two thousand and six dash zero seven dash four three five eight. I reviewed the following information in connection with this request. One, a site plan dated three twenty-six thirteen, two, a landscape plan dated three twenty-eight thirteen, and three, a site plan dated April first, two thousand and thirteen. Pursuant to my review, I offer the planning commission the following comments for their consideration. Number one, the density proposed complies with the judgment entry. The site as proposed details eighty attached units, the only, actually Dennis and I talked about, or we talked about this, John, they are not duplexes, they are four-plex structures, so Brian's comments are actually, they're actually four units. Section number two, section eleven sixty-three oh four C regulates multifamily development in the R two district. In this section, I found a few deficiencies that must be addressed prior to site plan approval. Six yard and open space requirements, item B, between ends of buildings, the distance shall not be less than twenty feet. It appears there is approximately seventeen feet between the ends of the buildings along drives A, B, and C. The plan must be modified to reflect the required twenty feet. Six yard and open space requirements, item E, the yard facing the street, front yard shall not be less than twenty-five feet. It appears that the units along drive A and possibly drive B do not have twenty-five feet from the street. Number three, section eleven sixty-three oh four C eight requires the side and rear block line of a multiple family dwelling be screened to a minimum height of six feet to any adjacent non-residential zoning district. The applicant should confirm if this requirement is being met for units abutting in the commercially zoned land to the north. Number four, as discussed in my report for the assisted living facility proposal, I am concerned with the amount of traffic that will be generated by these two developments. The city should consider a coordinated second means of ingress egress for both developments. In means three presents a problem for locating a drive to South Bedford, but coordination between the two developments likely can yield an acceptable location. Simply from an emergency services perspective, two means of access to these developments should strongly be considered. Number five, section eleven sixty-three oh four requires the units being proposed to be a minimum size. The applicant should confirm their proposal complies with the minimum standards. The plan is sufficient to receive preliminary plan approval, but I caution this approach until ample consideration is given to adding a second ingress egress point to South Bedford. That's one.
Okay.
Next.
Nick's comments. I reviewed the submitted plan on the April eighth planning commission agenda and offer the following. Number one, please show the repairing setbacks on the plans. It appears as though the post-storm water management basin may fall into the setback area. There also appears to be a repairing zone at the northwest corner of the property to the west of unit A. See section nine twenty-four oh six B three for regulations concerning placement of stormwater retention or detention facilities placed within the repairing setback. Number two, stormwater management facility design shall be in accordance with Macedonia codified ordinance and Summit County Engineers' Stormwater Management Manual. Post-construction as-built and long-term maintenance agreement will be required. Number three, stormwater quality must be provided for the proposed improvements. Number four, provide drainage calculations for proposed site improvements. Calculations shall be per the requirements set forth in the Summit County Engineers' Stormwater Management Manual. Number five, proposed roadway plan and profile grading and utility plans will be required for paving and drainage purposes. Number six, if inverted crown pavement is to be used, details need to be submitted showing that proper adequate drainage of the stud base is being provided. Typical roadway section submitted does not indicate provisions of under drains, but pavement joint detail plan will be required. Number seven, see section eleven sixty-three oh four C eight for landscaping screening requirements. Number eight, development shall comply with codified ordinance chapter eleven twenty-one required improvements for pavement, sidewalks, drainage, sewage disposal, water supplies, survey monuments, street signs, electric lines, telephone lines, street lighting, and street trees. Number nine, a traffic study may be requested to satisfy concerns about development in this area and how it may impact South Bedford Road. Preliminary plan approval is recommended with the understanding that all engineering concerns and issues will be addressed administratively prior to issuance of any permits. Approved engineering plans will be provided to the commission prior to commencement of construction. I am available for further discussion at the commission's request.
And then Dennis, your other comment.
Yeah, I think the elevations of materials all comply with the town center standards. Everything we have to work on is a little alike stuff that we discussed, so.
All right, anything else, questions, comments?
Yeah, I just want to add to Nick's, the inverted crown, a little bit of concern with that. We've had it in one other area that was previously approved, however, it was in asphalt. And it's a continuous problem for the building department because we get, every year we have to cite the property owner to fix, you know, the drainage is down the center of the road and it's, it just is a continual problem, so. If this is in concrete, it might satisfy that problem.
We actually, just to respond to that, we do it actually for maintenance. It sounds a little counterintuitive, but because we use concrete streets, by having our catch bases in the center of the road, you've got less pipe underneath the road and therefore fewer trenches, trench settlements. We're here to own these long-term, you know, and certainly maintenance is a big concern for us too. The less we have to tear out in the future, the better. So, I understand your comment, what we talked to the city engineer about is relative to, and why he put in here, I think, that, you know, a plan you put together for not just the typical roadway, but also joint detail. Is, you know, the jointing of that's very important.
It's extremely.
To make sure that the joint's not right in the middle of the gutter, so.
Right, that and the under drains would be a big deal.
And actually, that wasn't on the plan, but no, we do. We provide a four-inch under drain in the center underneath the inverted crown and then those tie into the catch base at the nearest location. So, it wasn't shown on here, but it should have been, shame on the plan prepared.
What is with your road?
We typically do twenty-four foot from the back curve to back to curve. We like to keep them narrow because it keeps traffic slower. I mean, most are residence rats though, anyway. Keeps residents.
They drive right down the middle too.
Parking.
Parking, yes. We have guest parking shown, kind of sprinkled throughout. We've got the two-car attached garage and a full two-car driveway behind those garages. I think that probably satisfies most of the intent of any kind of resident and guest parking. However, we do provide throughout in locations where, you know, we've got some parking spaces here, kind of nestled down on this side, a couple sprinkled in through here. We recognize people have Super Bowl parties, people have baby showers, people have, you name it. So, we do need to have other parking provided through here. So, we do provide other parking areas, so you don't have to go talk to your neighbor and say, hey, we have three people over and somebody use your side of the driveway.
Where are your mailboxes located?
Our mailboxes will be gang mailboxes. They'll be located right over here with the leasing center, right in that location.
But that's where they'll be for all eighty units?
Yes, that's correct. And that's the easiest in actually, so if you're in one of the units on the east side, you have to pick up their mail, you can come out the roundabout, get into the community right there and then you can drive around your unit. That's why we located them, that was the kind of, the most direct route for everybody. And it has a fantastic view of the lake. I mean, I care, we really enjoy that.
I have a question. What do you guys charge for maintenance on it when people have problems in that place? Are you charging people living there or what?
For us?
Yeah.
It's all part of our, no, it's a, it's a part of our business model. It's not like a town home where if repairs need to be done, a special assessment needs to be put out. That maintenance cost is on us. You know, we build into our business model and we're required by our financing actually to put aside a specific amount of money each year per unit.
If there's any, you can turn a house, you can water or.
It's on us.
It's all included.
Everything.
From Tom Conk to him.
No, it's all, it's all on us. If the roof leaks, we have to fix it. If there's a problem with the footer drains, we have to do something about it. We're not, we're a business, in some regards, we're a business just like a multi-story apartment complex would be, whereas if you've got a three-story tall building and, you know, the razor's coming in the top floor, that owner has to fix that roof. Just like that, these are all of our units. They aren't townhomes that have an association or anything, we manage them. So, we will be the ones that have to pay for the roof.
All right, you're not, we put no sidewalks in there?
Well, I think the discussion was that they want to see sidewalks on one side of the street.
Why not on both sides? People living on both sides?
What we find it does is it really just increases the amount of impervious surface. It increases the amount of concrete, which is something that everybody right now is trying to reduce and they're trying to figure out.
That's an extra, such as this.
That's all right, Mike.
Path, if you have a path there and somebody's gonna get hurt on a path and you have stones and mud there and stuff there, that's no good. You gotta have concrete down.
Well, this is different than what we usually have, Mike. What you've seen up to this point, there's nothing like this. This is totally different.
And why do you want to put sidewalks for down on South Bedford Road for that?
Well, we did that for the children.
For school?
Yes. Not because we're encouraging, I actually, I'd love it if everybody was out there walking.
And another note, some of the similar developments, the planning commission in the past has requested that lighted fountains go into the lake areas. Would you be considering anything like that?
I'd love to say yes. The issue we have on that is that that lake is underneath a conservation easement and I can't even grade in that conservation easement. So, I, if I could, I'd be fantastic.
Right.
I'll look into it. I don't think I probably can, but. Well.
What about utilities? Are you, any of your, are you guys providing any utilities to the tenants?
Well, they're, obviously all installed. Typically sewer and water is a fixed fee, so we take the usage of the overall community over a year and then we charge a fixed fee for water and sewer in the community. We provide trash pickup.
Right.
That's on us. And then electric, gas is on the tenant.
Okay.
So, it's obviously all installed there, but, you know, they have to change the service order then.
That's individually metered.
That's directed. There was four meters.
That's what we're doing in ours, we're putting in meters now in the apartment building.
Well, actually, per the new building code, I believe, we can, we used to put all the meters in one into the building and we'd go up into the attic. We can no longer do that. Now, the meter, as we said, outside each unit, which is a little, look, we don't want to do it, the community doesn't want to do it. I don't know, you guys want to do it, but, you know, we're kind of forced into it with the building code.
Especially with four units, Ohio Building Code instead of residential.
What do we need tonight?
He wants preliminary approval.
Preliminary approval. All right, well, what are we gonna do about traffic?
Yeah, conceptual approval, yes, sorry.
Conceptual approval. What about the traffic? Has there been any?
We're gonna, once he gets into the engineering, Nick is gonna require some sort of a traffic study to see.
There probably, I would say, makes sense for us to participate with.
With, along with the assisted living center, they could coordinate that.
Not to volunteer on it.
No, they're behind you.
Yeah, but that was.
I don't have any.
Right, right.
Do you have any other concerns, Rita?
Nope.
I mean, that traffic is about.
I think, you know, we, I have no problem with a conditional approval. I'd like them to come back showing what they're putting in for sidewalks.
Conceptual.
Conceptual.
All right, so do we have a motion for conceptual approval?
I'm making a motion that we get conceptual approval.
Man, that's about your tenth one, doesn't it?
Yeah, I know, well.
I second.
There's, we're few and far between tonight.
That's the same.
Do we have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? Okay, we'll be discussing this a lot, I'm sure, outside this room, but, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
I put my card out there, if any of you guys have questions, you know, certainly let me know.
Here's something about us.
Okay, fantastic.
That's where that figures, that we have.
Oh, yeah.
Ten percent of our homes rented now.
Yeah. Actually, I noticed when I was doing a little research that there's, so I think you're, you're six or seven percent in kind of an organized rental and then I think it was three to seven percent, single-family homes.
Wow, you've become a great believer in some we have. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You've done a great job of.
Oh, just one?
I hope it all works out.
Hopefully, be back to see you guys soon.
Hey.
Now, does this go to, this doesn't go to council, this is just.
Not.
Here, okay.
Yes.
Great, because I have something going on on Thursday. We went to council on Thursday.
Yeah. Right now, everything is conceptual.
Okay.
And they'll be answering about it, as you can see right from Mike. See, he has questions.
I ain't gonna have a problem.
Okay, that's, that's called government and we let them.
I don't, I don't think it's right myself. You've got one on both sides of the street, don't pour it in.
All right.
People living on both sides.
We got the point. All right, anything else?
You. Right next to you, I'll make sure of that.
Do you, we have one more item left on the agenda.
We have two more. We have to go back to Guardian.
Okay.
And the rezoning on Highland.
Oh, the rezoning on Highland, yes.
What's going on now?
Mayor?
I can't keep the pen.
No, you can't. There is.
I don't know, if you want to wait for somebody from Guardian, it might be.
We can wait, but we need to move forward with that chief.
Yes, correct.
All right, so how about the, do we have comments on the GI expansion? Alls we're, alls we're doing is this Highland Road, okay?
Oh, we're back here by those rezonings?
Yeah, this Highland Road. All of this is GI and this is LI, but there's a strip of LI here that people are using it as GI. So, instead of seeing everybody's out of confirmation, we're just gonna move to GI.
Does that go to the more of the people?
No. In fact, this was discussed at council meetings as much as three years ago.
Well, yeah, this was originally brought up by Sam Pilato.
He's not answering.
All right, we have any comments on that?
I think it's a good idea, I mean.
Yeah?
I.
They've kept her too long in being non-conforming, you know, to try to cite them or anything else.
We don't, you don't need an answer right now.
No.
Can I come back to you on this?
Well, did, I don't know.
I mean, just, can we bring this back? I mean, I don't want to give an answer.
Well, if you don't have.
I, this is the first.
Well, we want to put it on the agenda because we have to get legislations to do it.
Oh, okay then, that's fine with that. That's what I mean, I don't want to just say.
If you say yes tonight, it isn't gonna happen.
Okay.
No, no, it's, it's got. Council has to approve it.
Okay, I'm making a recommendation that we don't.
Okay, that's fine, 'cause I was like, I don't know. I would have to.
Well, it's a good idea and you can discuss it all you want, but boy, this is something we needed to do for years.
All right, that's fine. I mean, if it's gonna come to council, that's true.
It's gonna come to council. So, do we have a motion?
Well, let's read Brian's memo first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we didn't have that.
Yeah, we.
Oh, we do, it's attached to your map. It's not with your pack, it's attached to the map, so you actually know what the map is about. It says, pursuant to your request, I reviewed the option of rezoning all of the limited industrial zone property on the south side of Highland Road from Capitol Boulevard to East Valley New Road to the general industrial zoning district. In examining this proposal, I reviewed permitted and conditional uses in these two districts and came to the conclusion that the primary difference between the districts is the fact that the outdoor storage is permitted in the GI district and not in the LI district. Based on our telephone conversation regarding this proposal, the fact that many of the businesses in the LI district south of Highland Road have outdoor storage is the main reason why this rezoning proposal is being considered. Given this, it seems logical to rezone these properties to GI in order to bring them into compliance with the code. The only other noteworthy differences between the two districts is that the communication facilities, public utilities, and post offices, other governmental services are permitted in the GI district but conditionally permitted in the LI district. I don't believe this is a significant difference and certainly is not something that should hold up the rezoning proposal. On a related note, I do recommend that if the city proceeds with this proposal, consideration should be given to rezone the LI property east and west of Corporate Park Drive to GI as well. This approach will eliminate all LI zone property on the south side of Highland Road and likely bring a number of properties in compliance with the outdoor storage limitations of the code.
Okay, and so Kayla, if this is gonna come to council, just to have a copy of that, his notes with that, and then I'll be the council to sponsor it. Whoever has to be the originator of it, all right?
All right, well, it's gonna come from my office because it's some engineer.
And I'll be the council to sponsor.
That'll be.
But make sure that the.
But this shows you, alls we're doing is we're taking this zone and moving it north to the other side of the street.
Well, to the right of way, to the right of way. Correct.
That's all. And actually, this is a good thing because it gives all these property owners more flexibility instead of being LI, being GI.
Right, so when, when one company moves out that had outdoor storage before and another company comes in and we're telling them they can't have outdoor storage, but their neighbor is existing, it makes it a tough situation for, for any business to come in there and then they have this false indication that they could store outside.
I think some of the businesses, the front part of their business is LI and the back part is.
Yes.
Yeah, it's true.
Some are split.
So, it's just a mess. It never should have been that way. So, do we have any more comments? No. We have no motion. I wonder who'll make it.
See, I'll make the motion. We're in full agreement with the recommendation of the LI being changed to GI.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay, that's all. Now we'll go to council.
You want, you want to do Guardian tonight or you want to wait till?
A Guardian table?
It's up to you guys.
Or, or you want to just go with it?
What are your thoughts?
What, what does Brian, what Brian's.
Might as well read it out and see what you, what your thoughts are.
Okay, read it out, let's see what it says. Only one more, Kayla, I promise.
Thought I was done.
I promise.
All right, the applicant is requesting to construct a fifteen point one six nine square foot ground monument sign in front of their property located in any surrounding value road. Property is owned limited industrial. Please note, the applicant was approved in two thousand twelve for a twenty-eight square foot ground sign. The planning commission stipulated that the base of the sign be brick. It appears that the applicant is requesting to go back to their original proposal using six by six treated wooden posts. I reviewed the sign for compliance with section eleven seventy-nine oh seven B of the Macedonia Planning and Zoning Code, which permits at least one monument sign at forty square feet. More area is permitted for large lots, but this proposal is for a sign less than forty square feet, so additional area is not needed. The concern I have with this proposal is twofold. Number one, the planning commission historically has not permitted signs mounted to wood posts. Typically, the commission has required a full brick or four-foot split face block as proposed, I'm sorry, as the base for ground signs. And two, to the best of my knowledge, the property has already been approved for two other ground monument signs. One for TPC wire and I believe another was approved, another approval was issued for a ground sign related to the building owner inside. If this is accurate, then Guardian's ground side will be the, will be the third road for this property and section eleven seventy-nine oh seven of the code only permits two. This issue is most important and requires clarification prior to planning commission action regarding this request. The concern regarding aesthetics is a moot point if the sign is not permitted.
Good job. Yeah, well, if you're looking for a decision tonight, I think they need to know Brian's comments and there's nobody here. Or do they know? Are they aware of it?
Do you feel that it should only be?
Well, I, no, I think, I see a part of the code here that says the total allowable area of freestanding signs according to provisions of this section may be distributed to one freestanding sign for each two hundred and fifty feet of lot frontage or fraction thereof. This slot has twelve hundred feet of frontage at plus.
Yeah. Is this, if I'm, what, the minutes that were attached on this? This is from two thousand and twelve's meeting with the same sign?
Yes.
All right, because it's probably important to read the minutes from July twenty-third, two thousand and twelve. This was presented to the planning commission at that time. It says, comments were read from the city planner Brian France. Mr. Martin felt that the monument sign should have a brick base. Mr. Scherer asked if a faux brick was acceptable and the commission said yes. Mr. Sacks suggested using the same machinery that exists on the entrance gates. Mr. Morris made a motion to approve the proposed signage with the stipulation that the monument sign has a brick base. Mr. Mark seconded. All members were in favor and the signage was approved. So, I guess what you'd have to consider is, do you want to go back on that approval? Do you need brick now or?
I think we're setting a dangerous precedent to do that, to really do. I think, I think we ought to keep with, I don't care if it's.
Yeah, because, I mean, that's entirely up to you, but if you, if you approved it previously with brick or faux brick, like Seznes, I think.
You know what? That property's under a micro stove. And it would be in our best interest to just stick to our guns.
We're not, we're not asking them to spend a lot of money. If they had to put a foundation and everything in because they were going up with regular brick.
Right.
I think they would have grounds.
All right, so this is give and take, right? We're giving them that they can put their third sign up.
And they can use faux brick.
And they can use faux brick.
I think somebody should probably be present to discuss.
Yeah.
Well, then you want it at the table?
Well, let me just fill you guys in. I, they installed their wall signs and they have this monument sign just hanging over the existing. So, I sent them a letter that they owe me permit fees because they haven't paid up yet. Jim Scherer with a sign above instructed the signs and they installed them on their own. Guardian installed the signs on their own. And they didn't want to pay for the base because the neighbor didn't have to do the base. TPC wasn't required to do, make a monument. So, Jim Scherer from a sign above is just kind of in the middle of things. I don't think I'll be able to get him in here because they're not paying him anymore. He's just my contact, so I, I can try to get Guardian in here.
But they have a whole sign up. What did Dad have, or was it grandfather?
TCP, that was approved on, about a year ago.
About the same time. Yeah, there's a picture of it attached to the rest of the Guardian.
It's on the south drive by the water tower.
Pardon?
It's on the south drive by the water tower.
So, what I would suggest is, is somebody come in from Guardian and then, until we approve the sign, I think somebody should come in and discuss it.
So, we have a motion to the table?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Now, do we have any other items?
Who made the motion to the table, I'm sorry?
I guess I made the motion.
He made the motion to the table.
I mean, we're keeping the same pattern. Make it easy.
Sure, I'm not taking notes right now.
Maybe we can record them.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There you go. All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned, thank you very much.
Kayla, can you look in to find out?
What building they just.